I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it is in, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite in its
Councilor.
Councilor Alexander, here. Councilor Brandon, here. Councilor Snyder, here. Councilor Conklin, here. Councilor Missordi, here. Councilor Stevenson, mayor law.
Okay.
Approval of minutes from January twenty.
Number second.
Motion for a second.
Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson, mayor law.
Yes.
Four A, public comments in the brief. Comments from Regent City Taxi. Four B, request for the closure of East Water Creek from Jay Grove on May twenty fifth.
County Arts Council and the Lock Haven City W are requesting the closure of East Water Street from Jay Grove Street on Sunday, May twenty fifth from three to eleven for memorial celebration at Edmonds Park, featuring live music, vendors, and fireworks. And I'll make sure that all of their paperwork and permits are completed, as well as work with the fire department for the location of their fireworks.
I have a third vote. House again.
Motion for a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes.
Four C, Sentinel Journey, use request.
It's the annual use request from Sentinel Learning for this year's fly-in, as well as two fundraiser events. And the fly-in will be held June seventeen through June twenty first. The FAA implemented new non-aviation use rules for general aviation airports last year, and our solicitor worked with Casey Campbell, Tom, to come up with kind of a guide sheet and application process, which is required. So I did email Kim Garlick to let her know that the solicitor's reviewing whether the pancake breakfasts fall under that. And if they do, then we'll work through that process with them.
Do additional approval?
Yeah, I think if you were to approve it on condition that the FAA process is the same.
For the motion. You do.
Second.
Thank you. Motion for a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Is there anything else we need to discuss about the FAA's approval of said event? I mean, is this something that they would tell us we have to charge for?
They may. But the solicitor will look into it compared to their rules and regulations, which are rather extensive, and then give us a way in on whether or not we go through that process of application to the FAA, which has to be done. One is going to be tight because it's supposed to be a hundred and fifty days before the event takes place.
Any other question? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Do we have any other?
I have none.
Unfinished business five A, Resolution of twenty twenty five dash zero two authorized legal action concerning transfer of water system.
On eleven twenty five twenty four, city council adopted a resolution directing the Lock Haven City Authority to sign a transfer agreement. Since that date, the city authority has not returned or signed that transfer agreement, or held a public meeting on the same. So in consultation with the city's attorneys at Eckert Siemens, they drafted the following resolution for council's consideration this evening to authorize legal action necessary to transfer the water system from the authority to the city of Lock Haven.
Motion.
New resolution forty five oh two.
I'll say it.
Motion for a second. Comments, questions?
That first resolution or whatever we passed, and it was down to, he gave it thirty days or sixty days, and they just haven't answered back and all. So, but I did see bills to their solicitor asking about it. And so should we pay those bills? And should we wait until they?
You did authorize the payment.
We did authorize that.
We want to meet with, I mean, we've had, it's just January is a really hard month to try to meet with people. Everybody, I mean, we've lasted about two meetings a, yeah. So it's hard to find the time to get together to meet with them. And we do want to meet with them. I want to understand that this is only a next.
Right.
That we're going to try, we're going to try meeting with them. We're going to try talking with them. We're going to get the committees together. We saw, we saw Rich at the filtration authority meeting, indicating that we wanted to get together and meet. So we do plan on meeting with them.
It doesn't matter because the rest of it's all delaying action, which is what we avoided by ordinance in November. And now here it is February. So quit driving your feet in. Let's, let's get this started.
And comments, questions? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson, mayor law.
Five B, Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero three.
This is a resolution regarding the modification of the fiscal year twenty twenty one CPG program. A public hearing was held for this matter, as well as like a notice in the newspaper posted and posted in City Hall and the Ross Library. It deletes a activity from our twenty twenty one CPG program. The reason it's deleted is the Ross Library didn't complete this project. They just did it without our CPG funds. So we cannot revise the funds until it's actually deleted because we didn't spend any money from it. Usually we're able to revise it because we did spend some funds. But that was not the case with this project. So we are deleting the project by modification and moving the eleven thousand nine hundred seventy five dollars to the Tiger Park improvements project. That project is nearly complete. We have to just make sure the grass grows in spring. And then the remainder of funds in that program, project activity will move over for the summer.
Do I have a motion? Was that the cost of the roof?
No, we were just a small portion of it. So that's why they, we actually bid it twice, where the signature funds, and then they decided just to go without it.
Back when I was on the board, the bids that came in were astronomical. I mean, it was ridiculous. Should have been. I understand.
Yeah.
Yes, for to go outside and do that. That was ridiculous.
There, there were similar things, yeah.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
Sir.
Motion for a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson, mayor law.
Yes. I see. Question on the hall one still.
I don't know. Did you get back to council? The question council had was the, do you buy date for responding to a request for funding for the Mill Hall Pool? And they don't really have a set date they plan on going out to bid this year. I would assume whatever they have in matching funds, that's what they'll draw from the grant. That's the way ours would work when they have matching funds. So right now, I read in the paper, they have about four hundred and fifty thousand. I believe it said in the express.
So.
Nine, I think it was twenty. Nine, nine twenty, nine fifty, somewhere over nine hundred.
But they won't open this year.
No.
Right.
So, and I think it would be true for us to wait until the end of this building, the beginning of the second month of the year. And so we don't know what our costs and expenses will be throughout the year. Wait till a bunch of time to decide.
We got a follow-up on us.
Oh, that's it, don't they? Say something else, maybe I want to.
All right, you'll do what I do. We, we heard kind of a follow-up to their presentation to the recreation, the county recreation board, let's speak. And they have some great capital campaigns planned. They have a hundred donors and a hundred dollars. A hundred dollars, a hundred donors, a hundred days.
A specific person that had put together.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, so they're kind of, I think they're really working to get this done. And I don't think that we do any disservice to them by waiting until next budget season to see where we stand and working it into the budget. I didn't get that impression that it was going to be make or break for them. We, as long as they know we're considering it, and, you know, and there's lots of ways that people could be helping with the Mill Hall, Mill Hall Pool. I think you're going to get lots of opportunities as residents of the city, as members, you know, as people who use the pool to give money towards the project.
May I ask, has anybody heard if the county was approached and if they're going to donate awards to the pool? Because they cover all of us. If you go off even donate to the city government, we're also donating again to county government. So we have to be cautious with that. Back to, I didn't hear the county had stepped up to help a little.
I didn't hear an amount, but I did hear that they're.
Considering.
Yeah.
Anything else? Someone guess that issue is dead at this moment? Off, yeah. All right, thank you. Ah, any other unfinished business? Not that I have. Okay, new business. Six A, ordinance under twenty twenty five dash zero one.
In order to continue to be eligible for grants through, is it section six oh five?
Nine oh two.
Nine of too many numbers. For recycling from the state, they did a review of our ordinance, and we needed to add just a couple pieces of language. We used to say at multifamily dwellings and by commercial establishments, that needs to be updated to multifamily dwellings and municipal, commercial, industrial establishments and at community events. Community events is defined in the ordinance, the event at which there will be one hundred or more individuals per day, which include but are not limited to fairs, bazaar, socials, picnics, and organs.
Do I have a motion?
Can we be ordinance? I second.
Motion for a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Go ahead.
Just want to ask, are we going to put this in as part of the reclosure thing? Is that, is that, is that what this means? Am I understanding this properly? Okay, that's.
And, well then, do we have recycling containers at?
We do.
Okay. I, I knew we used to, but I think they were pretty beat up, and I didn't know if we still do it.
Because the recycling center in Michaelhatten still have those containers that they loan to people for events, to put cans and then other things. It's a separation thing, and then the weight bags, the plastic stuff. They have a number of them down there that can be tagged.
They'll change some resources. Yeah, they also have regular, I think they're fifty gallon, or maybe bigger than hard sided ones too, not the plastic bags. But they have the hard sided, we have those at the.
Because there is a mechanism, or groups have events to get, and, and make that arrangement to the township, or the recycling down the way down ship directly for that event. Be saying they're going to get insurance, saying they're going to take them, fill out permits, everything else. That shouldn't be on us, although we can oversee that they had, that they've done that. That's something on their checklist. I did, there was, I've been involved, but they had cans. It's, the bag things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a loading section. Are there any more comments? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Six B, Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero four.
I just noticed that the resolution says thirty-two boxes, and that was before the police added to the resolution. But the Pennsylvania Storage Museum Commission has a retention and disposition policy and guidebook that the city follows. And this resolution is prepared in accordance with that for retention of different types of documents, which is spelled out specifically in the resolution. The total quantity number will be updated. And then this is used as a checklist and guide when the shredding company actually comes and the police are present when that takes place.
They want to make an amended resolution.
Many have motion to approve, but the amendment, a total number of record or boxes of records to equal what is on the list. Does that work?
That's right.
I'll say.
We have a motion for a second. Any further comments on the motion? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Six C, Resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero five.
It's a resolution to basically automate the cost for industrial users per gallon to the same as what individual municipalities are charged. Those automatically adjust every February is when we get the previous year done. In last year, the cost per thousand gallons was three dollars and seven cents. It actually did go down this year. So it'll be two dollars and ninety cents per thousand gallons that are charged to the industry, which is the same as what's charged to the municipalities.
Do I have a motion?
New resolution forty five oh five.
Thank you. Motion for a second. Further discussion? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes. Six D, consideration of recommendation from the Lock Haven Fire Advisory Board.
It's here. Pickett is missing the letter that is from the secretary of the fire advisory board, but Chief Woodding is here and can explain what the recommendation is for the change of rules and regulations for relief drivers.
So if not aware, firefighters in Pennsylvania are exempt from C L requirement when operating fire department apparatus. About twelve years ago, we have revised our requirements, and we thought it was best that the part timers had C Ls. Because it wasn't the ultimate pain at the time, but in two thousand twenty-two, the guidelines changed, and now you're required to attend a truck drivers academy, I guess, is called, to obtain your C L. And we feel that that's kind of not something part timer could do. The biggest reason being it's eight hours long, and the cost is twenty-five hundred dollars. So we would like to recommend that that C L requirement is made for part timers.
And auxiliary drivers?
Well, there's never.
There's never part of that?
Yeah.
Is that, that doesn't restrict, I know it doesn't go on to or from the call. What about the rest of the time? I guess auxiliary or?
Right, yeah.
But, do we get that in writing somehow? Look at the coverage? And did the solicitor draw that up, or just come from the advisory board for us to consider it?
It's the removal of one sentence in the document that states that the relief driver must have C L B at a minimum. So that's just been stricken.
Do I have a motion?
And then do you, the agreement or the?
The amendment.
The amendment. I, I move the amendment.
I will second.
Motion for a second. Any further questions, comments? Off the voting.
I'm thinking, like, do we, do we, do we need the C D L, the new agreement in twenty twenty-two? Is that what you said, the federal guidelines? We don't need it now?
No, firefighters are exempt regardless, but we felt at the time that they should have a C D L just to lessen our exposure to liability.
So then, what happened in twenty twenty-two?
The federal guidelines came out and said that you must attend the truck drivers academy now, in order to get a C D L, not in order to be a fire driver.
That, that, okay. And that clarified, I'm like, it's like, we don't need it, then, okay. I appreciate that clarification. Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
I always look around before I call the police.
I saw you look that way, but I didn't.
I look like.
Probably hiding.
No, I didn't. I saw that.
I think he just had a blank.
Yeah, well, I was.
Yeah, it's like, I'm hearing two different things, and I'm like, I'm confused here. Okay, I appreciate that.
Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Six E, consideration of water line easement.
The Tangent Solar Project, you can see on the last page of this packet, regarding Tangent, the current layout, the solar farm. And as part of that layout, Tangent had to rearrange so that they could avoid both a water main and a U G I gas main. And so this is the easement between the city and Tangent, for Tangent to retain that easement for the city's benefit so that we can get in there if something were to happen to the water.
Do I have a motion?
I think the people. Second.
Have a motion for a second. Do I have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have. There's fifteen foot for the water easement, but there does not say how far it is moving yet.
Uh, this does, this particular easement is not for water, but I'm not sure what it is.
For the water.
Or for the water, no? Any other questions?
It's two waters. Yes. Yeah, it comes in the next two different words.
Yeah.
Any other question? Off the vote.
Councilor Alexander, yes. Councilor Brandon, yes. Councilor Brinkus, yes. Councilor Conklin, yes. Councilor Missordi, yes. Councilor Stevenson, yes. Mayor Law.
Yes. Six, twenty twenty four report on the use of liquid fuels funds.
This is the state's annual M S nine sixty-five, which reports how the city used the receipts from the state's liquid fuels tax, because the city banked the money last year in order to accomplish the next phase of sunset fine. We really only have interest income plus the state distribution, next year's allocation. They have the anticipated amount. I will caution you that the two hundred and twenty-two thousand is likely to be less, because every year, the estimate in the last few years has come in higher than the actual.
But three hundred and twenty-one dollars, and they want to use something with.
Just leave it.
Oh, that's actually a pass-through. So you opened a pligged account with this, and two twenty-one eighty-five was the amount left in First National Bank at the end of the year. So it counts as a payment and a receipt.
Six G, Notice of twenty twenty four on the real estate.
This is the annual report for unpaid real estate taxes for the twenty twenty-four fiscal and calendar year, all accounted for. The city has a ninety-one percent collection rate, still at significantly higher than it used to be. And part of that is when council made action to accept four payments during the course of the year. That took us from the mid-eighties up into usually about ninety-two percent. So I think the highest we've been since doing that was ninety-five percent collection rate. So helpful to.
Any other new business?
I have none, Your Honor.
Yeah, we have any reports? Want to know what videos or?
Yeah, I, I'd want to make a quick, the Lock Haven, yeah, Central Filamentated Water Filration Authority, we've had several meetings, actually. We had a meeting, a regular standing meeting, and then we got together the following, I think it was Monday, no, following Friday, and we had city staff. Suburban staff, Water Filration Authority staff, we had our, Edwin Dobson Forman was there, and we had our meter guy. What's his name?
Tom Cracker.
The Tom Cracker.
Oh, Hilligan.
Hilligan. They were all there. We were all there in one group together. And then we actually went out after the meeting and set some gauges, turned some pumps on and off. I found out where the, where the field is at the end of, at the end, almost the end of yet there road, where all the different gauges are, which ones do what. So I got an education that day and stood in the cold for a while. And by returning to them and said, well, look, guys, there's nothing more I can do for you. So they checked them that day. There was no, there were no leaks between the Water Filration Authority building and that location. Then they came back the following Monday. I did not know, because it was just outdoor work. And they went from both sides of the Baltimore Creek to double check that name that comes across at that lower end. And that was, and actually, to be honest, we were hoping it was going to leak. We were hoping that's where water was going. But it was not. That did not show any leak or drop in pressure either. They did make some adjustments to get the city's pressure back up. I think it was too low. So we got the city's pressure back up where it was supposed to be. And, and I don't know what they decided at the end of Monday's meeting, but I'll find that out this month's water filtration.
Although the process did bring to light some large quantity leaks. They were not city. It is an issue as to where the leaks could be taking place, and it could very well be that it's not all leaks. Some of the meters that we have for industrial customers are thirty years old, with a life expectancy of a maximum of twenty. So we do have a list of sixteen meters just off the bat that need to be replaced, and just for equipment, about twenty-six thousand dollars. Those will probably be much more accurate. A lot of the industrial meters have been installed in a way that we cannot actually test them to see if they are accurate, because they don't have blow offs. There are also a couple places we were able to identify where single user, uh, four water meters in buildings, but the lateral comes off of the main and goes quite a distance, splits and goes into these buildings. Well, that user could also have a meter pit right where it comes off of the main. The reason that's important is that lateral was leaking for quite a while, and nobody pays for that bill, right? So we are currently working with Edwin Dobson Forman to. Currently working with the Wind Dobson Foreman to find ways that that may make some difference. Even if it made some difference, it's not enough to make up for the total unaccounted for water on the city side. So we do leak detection daily, but what we find are small leaks. That are just a residential leak and or a lateral leak on a customer's line. Um, so nothing of. Great significance, um, like these current tests we're able to find for suburban to suburban's good fortune. Uh, cause that's less payment for unaccounted for water for them. But we have to continue to see where the unaccounted for water is. Because it cannot be twenty million level leaks. You know, it's too much of a quantity.
Fair because how much, I mean, we're, we're only permanent, it's just so much for the planet.
It's.
We're, we've been running well over that.
Right. We had to figure out what that is.
And even, even if that worked, in my mind, look, I've got a speech of my own. Even if it worked for the fact that we were already in violation of that. Pouring out of water that was supposed to be poured, even if it weren't for that, we have a moral obligation. To make sure that we're not wasting water when we look around this country and see people without water. So many, you know, so many places, so.
It also costs a lot more money. They're gonna flush the soldiers out.
Right.
Off and so on.
Right.
That's all costly.
Yeah.
And I was just gonna say, and that, and, and we're, and we're running the plant at its maximum capacity. Most of the time, I mean, they're cleaning filters all the time and the staff is. Haggard, I mean, it is, it is, it is a really big deal. I think people need to understand. That if you see water leaking someplace or hear water leaking, if you're out for a walk and you hear water running through the storm. Drains on a dry day, you really need to call someone, report it because it could. It, it could be, you know, you can find something significant. It could be something small, but water leaking in the city is a big deal no matter where it is. The other thing I think is really important to say. How great it was that our crew was out there working together with everybody. I think that the groups working together. On a project like this just demonstrating how important that a joint authority is for all of us. Because it gives so much more equipment, so much more access and a real team effort. And that's what it's gonna take is a team effort to get to the bottom of all this. All of them working together makes all the difference.
And it worked well.
Yeah.
That day. It certainly worked well. So I.
The filtration authority folks are great to work with and I, and our people are just super. So, and I know suburbs people are great too. Our folks really deserve to be proud.
We did go around, um. The levee is where most of our stormwater goes is through conduits in the levee. So when it was no degrees out. Um, the levee personnel did drive and inspect all of those. And there was no. Uh, stormwater coming out, which would be a telltale sign that where we were losing it was into the stormwater system. So we didn't see any of that. Uh, other than lust run, which always has water going through it. Um, and then. Uh, we also, during that same period of no degrees, if you saw a large amount of water. Frozen on the road, that would be indicative of a leak as well. We drove the whole city and didn't find that either. Uh, so. We continue to search. It is one of life's great mysteries, but. Uh, we can't give up searching because it's too important.
Any other?
The, the county recreation authority meeting was. Awesome and a really great meeting. They gave kudos, kudos to our very own Casey. For her hard work and your grant that you did. That we didn't know about. So congratulations to Casey on, on helping out the county though. And. They had a, they had asked us about you, about making sure that. Our intention was to continue to cooperate with making sure that Zindal. Uh, the trails were marked, the trails were made. So that people could find their way around us and people weren't wandering and will sit around the woods of Zindal. And those sorts of things. They were really grateful for council. There, there was four of us there and they were really glad to see us. They were really grateful for our input. So it was a very good meeting and. Learned a lot about what's going on in the county. We, we need to know more about.
On the topic of Zindal, we do have, um. A meeting with the director of the lumber heritage region. Uh. The city is one of the locations in consideration for. A. feasibility study to revamp Zindal. That have like trailhead, public restrooms, that kind of thing. Um, at that location. Unfortunately, uh, the likely location will be where the current house is. So the house sustained damage last April in a windstorm. We're still. Strangely going back and forth with the insurance company. I think predominantly because it's not an emergency situation. Per se, but the house sustained damage far greater than its value. So, um, right now we're trying to. Seek out the most money that we can from the insurance policy so that it's enough enough to actually take down the structure. The roof alone is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. For repair from the tree's fall. Also it's missing. The back corner. Uh, it's completely gone. But. In that process. Working with. Uh. The city code office. Try to find someone who can demolish it and keep as much of the stone as possible from the porch. Because that would be a good starting point for a D C N R funded. Public facility to go on that site. To include restrooms, if we could keep part of the original, that would be fantastic. Uh. But that's the most recent update on that. We still have not settled with the insurance company, which is petrified. You wish you knew somebody on the board, but. They've passed this around like three times to different agents, but we're finally in the home stretch now. And had to get an appraisal done. We didn't do the appraisal. The uh. Insurance company sent an appraiser. The appraisal came in less than what we actually have on the books that we pay as an asset value. So that's where I would like that to go up to at least what we paid to make sure. Yeah. I'll say to you next week.
Anything else? Um. It's tomorrow day. They're gonna be here. Reagan and met with the representative. They're gonna be here tomorrow and uh, they're going to come in. And see if they have unclaimed property with state. And um. For the twenty seven, three, three and a half million dollars. But just within the city.
Yes, just within the city. Within the entire county, there's more than four million dollars.
Right.
I will say, having looked at that list since then. Lock Haven City Police Department and the Lock Haven City Treasurer have items in the mayor's packet tonight. Um, to be claimed, neither of, you know, a significant amount, but they're both vehicle accidents. Um. I thought the Lock Haven Express had unclaimed property. Patty Davis has unclaimed property. Several Realtors appear to have some degree of unclaimed property, but. Being a college town, it could be a lot of people who used to live here. And perhaps it's something like the return of your security deposit or a portion thereof. So it's really worth checking out unclaimed property. We checked it out. Maybe three years ago and cleaned up everything that was for the city and two more have appeared since then. And they have appeared but have origin dates that are significantly older than a couple of years ago. So it's stuff that was just recently turned over to the treasury. But yeah, they very much would like people to use the website. If you have any curiosity about it, you're welcome to stop tomorrow ten to.
Tomorrow, ten to noon. Ten to noon. Do you come in here to council chambers?
Yeah.
Anyone? And he suggested just give them your last name, your zip code. There's a wider the search the better and uh, it may not even be used specifically. Maybe it's a family member. Uh, that you could find they have. Type of property and it's not just money, there's military awards that, you know, uh, were left in a safe box or whatever. The, uh, that's a lot of money and we want people to save a lot capable to get that money in their pockets, send it here. One that and see give them three million.
Yeah. That's going on uh, tomorrow.
Be like on Facebook or like, is there a way to share that with other people?
The express was gonna push it out.
Yeah, they put it out on the weekend this past weekend. The, the one, the article was gonna be out on Saturday.
Right.
So they should be able to find one on the express. You might be able to research that site, the treasury site, but they used to always publish wonderful page. Of everybody enlisted in, in the county. And I didn't see that issue.
Yeah, they uh, they do tell you. When they, whenever they have the public events, they'll tell you. Check every couple of years if it goes, you know, don't think that just because you checked it once, that there was nothing there, that there couldn't be something later. So they said every couple of years you should be looking. Those things get turned into those uh, later and later. My daughter just. Picked up a lap, final paycheck for what somebody she worked for in, in Carla. Was a bunch of a paycheck, but it, it was, there was no paycheck.
And they, they wanna get through.
The investors of their audits.
Does anyone else have anything up for bring before council, the city and four CDs on a conversation or?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do I have no shoe jerk?
Sure.